We're back at you with gloves off and today we have County Commissioner Jesse Goncalvo. How we doing Jesse?
We're doing fine, appreciate the invite.
And no, 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 thank you for doing what you're doing. And since last year to now, talk a little bit about what has occurred in the county, what new projects?
Of course, you know, I took office of January 2017 and when I took office there was a lot of people kind of neglected out in the areas of Precinct One. So I hit the ground running, I started with town hall meetings, of course. You're not going to understand the needs until you listen to the concerns, you understand the frustration that they have. So that's what we're able to do and so Precinct One consists of not only South Laredo but also Rio Bravo, El Cenizo, Mangana Hain which is La Presa community and of course Mirando at the EJ community. So it's a lot of responsibility as a county commissioner for this area and every different community has their different needs. So we have to go in there with open minds, with understanding, with patience and understand what that particular community needs. For example, in Mirando, one of the things that they were lacking was, you know, beautification, trash cleanup, you know, tree and limb, there's a lot of stuff over there that needs to be, you know, attended to. Not only that, but also the current, it's under construction right now and it's a big project, it's over, it's about a $500 million project, which is the elevated water tank that is currently being installed in the Mirando area. They, before they had a, just a standpipe, you know, an old design and it was already, you know, not up to par as far as quantity wise for the residents of the water board of the area. So it was not in TCQ, it was not up to TCQ standards. With this new elevated storage tank, we're going into something more modernized, it has twice the capacity. So that is just a big project in that area, just that area alone. And it's currently under construction and they're going to hopefully finish the construction, we'll do a nice ribbon cutting hopefully in the near future before the November deadline.
That's awesome. And number one, we've had many commissioners, okay? And I've seen many that have been termed, some of them voted out, someone didn't want to run anymore. But I've only seen one that's gone out there and was planting trees to better your community and we commend you for that. And keep doing that job because you start leading by example, okay? And you're out there, when I saw those pictures, I said, wait a minute, he's doing what he wants to do for the community, he's working for the community. And sometimes folks work in the office, but forget, forget actually that they're, the community wants to see you. If you're not part of it, well, yeah, you know, what are you looking for?
I'm a proactive kind of guy and you're right, you know, office work, you know, I can do it. I like doing the office work, but I like being out in the field, I like, you know, maybe it's law enforcement to me, but I like being out in the field, out in the community. When we're doing the cleanups or the tree plantings, you know, the community tells me like, are you really the commissioner? Because you look for me and I go, of course, you know, there's nothing new about this and get used to it because you're going to continue to see me out there.
And I'm not telling you because you're here. And I'll tell, I say it openly whoever, whatever's there. And then, you know, I'm not telling you because, you know, guess what, many folks can say, oh, Paul just said that because he's in front of me. No, you know me. But what else do you see that area of Laredo growing? Because it's really growing.
It is.
You know, you have a lot of projects coming of age, I don't know if they have that landfill and a bunch of other stuff that in that area going on. What do you see?
Well, let me tell you something about South Laredo. And this includes the new eastern growth of it, you know, because it's southeast of South Laredo. You know, Judge Donald Tejirina, of course I worked very well with the judge. And he was able to place, he came up to me and says, okay, I need you to be a part of the NPO. And that's, that's a Metropolitan Planning Organization which consists of city officials, county officials and Tech Start. So it's a whole different, you know, body that consists of councilmen, the mayor, of course, the county judge, two commissioners and the Tech Start directors and employees. And that organization is a real go, a real good to be a part of because South Laredo, we all know it's growing, it's booming. We, we see the fifth bridge, the four or five bridge coming up. We see that outer loop that needs to be constructed and of course, and it's all going to fall in place, all the way, hopefully, all the way from the El Cenizo area, the Rio Bravo area where that four or five bridge is being proposed, all the way to, you know, the north side. And we need that traffic alleviation, you know, traffic is huge in South Laredo.
It is.
Eighty-three south, you know, bumper to bumper for hours, you know, on rush hour.
And it's changed a lot since, you know, since I was in high school, there was just, you know, a couple of roads and, you know, some of the stuff were dirt roads and it's changed a lot since eighty-six to now. And it's, it's growing so fast, I don't, I think that we, we're trying to catch up to where it's growing.
Exactly, I think it's moving a little bit too fast for us, but we don't want to fall too behind. One of the things I ran on my platform and I mentioned, you know, more than once was, I want to alleviate traffic in eighty-three. So me being a part of this NPO organization was able to open up the doors with Tech Start in the city and we're doing right now currently, and of course it's a city, but through the NPO, there's a traffic synchronization project going on in South Laredo and I think, believe in North Laredo as well. It's a $600,000 project and that's going to help synchronize the lights so that the trafficking flow better. And that's one of the things that I'm proud of, you know, just to be a part of this, you know, making it real, what we talked about during campaign, because when you're in campaign mode, you talk about, you want to do a lot of things.
Sure.
Once you go in there, reality hits and says, okay, you need funding, you need grants, you need, you know.
Are you going to do them or not?
Exactly, so, you know, this one's, it's already.
Promise made should be a promise kept, you know?
That's what I'm big on.
Let's say hello, hi to a couple of guys. Hey, Liana, Olivia, Chuy, Marisolva, good morning out there. Rosie, have you guys got any questions? The number's going to be up there. If you guys can't see us on Facebook, download Border India app, has a lot of great shows and so on and so forth. So keep in touch. But here's something that happened yesterday and it touches your area and we all grieve and we all are in awe about what happened, the tragedy with that illegal girl that came over and was shot in the head by border patrol. And our prayers to everybody and for that community. And what do you say about that? Besides, you know, what's going on?
I was in a meeting when I got a text, I was getting calls and I couldn't answer and, and I got a text from my assistant that this was going on in Rio Bravo. My community center was in lockdown because it was a few blocks away. So I right away called the sheriff's office and the constable's office from the south. And, you know, tragic to hear what happened, you know, illegal, no illegal, it's just a tragedy when something like that happens in a community, in a close knit community like Rio Bravo. And, you know, I know that, I don't know the particulars of what happened or why it happened or not, I just know what's out there on social media and what I've been hearing from the sheriff's office and the constable's office, but, you know, I hope that, you know, they really take a close look at what happened and how it happened. You know, border patrol, just like the sheriff's office or any law enforcement agency, there has to be, after any type of shooting, there has to be a thorough investigation to make sure everything, everything was done according to protocol and policy. You know, I just, you know, send my prayers to the family of that young individual and not only that, but to the community, because I know the community's kind of shocked right now and going through a lot. You don't see that on an everyday basis and you don't want to see that anywhere.
Right. So, you know. We, we live in rough times and our first responders are law enforcement. People tend to forget about it. I don't care about what your political views are or your sexual orientation are, those are the guys that are going to show up and they're going to help you regardless of who you are. And we have to thank them. And sometimes tragedies occur. Sometimes they're justified. And all we know right now is that, that the authorities, since it was, since it was a border patrol, the FBI and everybody else is involved now, so it's in their hands. And we need to stop stuff like that from occurring again, you know, because it happens here. And it's not going to be the first time and it's not going to be the last time. So we just need to protect everybody. You know what I'm saying?
And it has a domino effect. You're going to have a family that's going to be mourning, a community that's going to be, you know, worried if it's going to happen again. And then you have that law enforcement officer, that agent, you know, it's not easy. It's not easy. I haven't been through that and I wouldn't want to be through that to where you have to make a decision that's going to change your life, you know, so.
And, you know, we have to build trust back again to that community. And I think that it's, we pray for that to happen quickly. Okay. I see a couple of parks coming of age, what's going on with that?
We have, we've been studying, we've been putting monies aside, going through the particulars, but we're going to have quite a few projects popping up in Precinct One and throughout Precinct One. And it's exciting because, you know, again, you talk about them in the, you know, we talk about them in the past, but when you try to, when you start seeing those wheels in motion and the stuff getting done, that's when it's, you know, gets exciting. So more than anything, you know, in the Presa community, which is Mangana Hain area, eighty-three south, there's no running water. And that's one of the main concerns that I have in that area. And I know the community itself is always fighting for running water. What, what we did is in getting together with the Commissioners Court, of course, the support of the court members and talking to, you know, the administrators and economic development, of course, and purchasing agent, we passed an item that is going to bring a state of the art water dispenser to them so they can have at least a water source, a first time water source inside the community. Right now, for any family that's from that area, it's a whole day's worth just to get running water to their house. They have to hitch that trailer or get that water tank on top of their truck, drive out to the Masterson area, which is a few miles away, and that's the closest one. When that one's not working or the water's out or for whatever reason malfunction, they have to travel at least another 10 miles to get running water. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's right, you know, water is life and we're trying to improve the quality of life. So this project we're looking at, it's going to be over $500,000 project. It's, it's very much needed, of course, and then I'm excited to, we're waiting on a grant. You know, we have the monies if we have to through bonds or through capital league, whatever, we're going to get it done. But if we can get it through grants, from the state grants or federal grants, that's always going to be a plus for us. So we applied for a grant through CBDG monies, Community Block Development Grants. We applied last October of 2017. And the way it goes, and I'm learning, because I'm, I get a little bit impatient, no news is good news on those type of grants, because it's going to be over, you know, a little bit over half a million. So we're waiting, we're keeping our fingers crossed. If it doesn't happen for whatever reason, that does not mean the project's not going to go forward. Commissioners Court is ready to, to find the monies from somewhere else and that's why I want to thank my colleagues and of course the judge, they're, they're really backing me up in this one 100%. And again, you know, you don't put a price on, on, on water. You know, you don't, so we're excited about that.
That is, that is our priority, we have to see what water's going to come out now. What do you think about secondary water sources and stuff like that? What's going on in the future with water here?
No, we always have to be prepared. And I know, I was, did I meet with somebody? I did meet with somebody that has this idea of a secondary water source coming from, I think it's over there on eighty-three north, somewhere over there. But yeah, we have to be prepared to what's coming, you know, Laredo's going to keep growing. We don't want to fall behind especially with water, so we have to start looking for that secondary water source soon.
I see, I see more growth, especially in that area, because that's the only way we can grow. We can go north, but it's landlocked, so it's going to be east and going west on the river. So that's basically what we're going to be expanding on. And we need that infrastructure, we need more water, of course. We see neighborhoods popping up left and right. We see a lot of, how can I say? What I see in the south, a lot more communal effort, everybody together is trying to do something. Do you see the same thing with the city, especially in the south, trying to work together, partner up in projects or not?
You know, when I took office, a big thing for me, I learned from law enforcement again, and you're going to see me reflect back to law enforcement time and time, is you're always going to look for that backup. You're always waiting for that backup in law enforcement, same mentality here. For me, as a commissioner, I need to be able to have that open door and working relationship with, with every school district, you know, both school districts or several school districts, because I also oversee in the, in the.
The Midland, yeah?
City officials, state officials, federal officials. We have to have that working relationship and the rest of the county officials, I'm big on working together and, and, and I don't know if the people have seen, the community have seen, when I do projects, it's not me doing the project, it's me and a group of individuals that I open the doors to and we have that very good working relationship. So I do want to mention, you know, Constable Mike Fiarreal, Judge Danny Dominguez, Board Member Ricardo Molina, the late Board Member, Mr. Joe Perez that passed away not so long ago, you know, Bobby Santos, you know, newly elected JP, you know, Bobby Quintana's going to be in the group, of course the Sheriff, I don't want to leave him out, Sheriff Martin Cuellar, you know, the rest of my colleagues. This is, you know, it's a team effort. I want to have that open relationship with the city and I do. You know, November's going to be big in elections for the city, I think there's going to be three council members up for reelection in my area. Municipal Court Judge is going to be up, the mayor's going to be up. So I just want to have that, you know, working relationship with, with whoever's there. Doesn't matter, political views aside or not, I want to be able to have those doors open because that's the way we give more to our community. That shows unity, you know, and we come together, we pull our resources more than anything, we get more done for the betterment of our community.
You're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. And that's, that needs to happen. And when you, when you have a public official that wants to work with others, you can see his side of town or where his area, start growing, will start improving, start looking, beautifying and et cetera, et cetera. And that's just the way it is, you know? What else, what else do you want to bring in?
Well, we have, we have a park coming up also in La Presa. I think it's very important, we have to have recreation activities for our kids, our youth. We don't want them out on the streets or hanging out with the bad element, the criminal element. So a nice park's going to be popping up early next year. We're in the process already of getting, you know, purchasing, going through the procurement process of a, of a construction company, whoever's going to build the park. That's going to happen in this coming year. We have, we're trying to bring a splash park to Rio Bravo and talking to, to Economic Development, we're, we're going to apply for this grant in October. And I think it's going to be a very big project, a first time ever in Precinct One, you know, to have a, it's called a splash pad or splash park, similar to the ones around the city. I think the community is going to be very, very much excited with that one, so that one's going to be popping up pretty soon. And Cenizo's going to have a fitness center. That one's coming up in this summer, of course, in a couple of months. First time ever, Cenizo's going to have a fitness center to where you don't have to travel all the way to Laredo to go to a gym, so we're going to have some, you know, exercise equipment out there, some trainers out there, giving some classes and that's going to be exciting for that part of the community as well. So we're excited, you know? I like staying busy, I like staying proactive and being involved with the community, I'm not used to, you know, sitting in an office all day, that's not me. So we're going to see a lot of stuff going on in Precinct One, I'm excited.
How do you feel about working with the new, new elected officials?
It's exciting, you know?
They don't, they don't go in until January, but you're looking forward to it.
Exactly, and, and some of them have already been involved one way or another with the community and that's what I like, that proactiveness approach, that wanting to be involved. You know, if I would have been a, a office commissioner, they would have seen me in the office eight two five, what about the community? If nobody knows, you know, or nobody has any business with the commissioner, they're never going to know that elected official. Yet we serve the community, you know? I serve over 75,000 constituents in Precinct One. They have to know it one way or another, so whenever we have events like, you know, gift giving in the area, whenever we give school supplies in the area, that's, that's a community involvement part that I'm big on. And I'm going to continue to do that, you know, spring break festivities for the community, summer festivities, you know, of course for the kids, programs for the elderly is also, is also big in my, in my area. So we have to stay, we have to stay focused in what we want to do for them. And what we want to do is we want to improve the quality of life, not only a certain way, but in many aspects that we can.
Sure. What do you think about the county judge, which we commend again for leading on that apparent voter fraud and so on and so forth? What do you say about him?
You know, somebody has to grab the bull by the horn and get it done, you know? It happens every election, it happens, you know, there's a lot of hiccups that, you know, and I'm not blaming Elections Office, of course, it's uncontrollable when you have so many votes coming in. You know, I went through an election contest and it was surprising how people can, not knowing what they're doing, can get in there and vote when they're not supposed to. Or, or, you know, an elderly turns in a vote by mail and it gets changed, you don't know what goes on. So, you know, I commend the judge for taking that bull by the horn and stepping up. I think it has to be closely looked at, you know? You know, anything that, that's against the law, unethical, you know, it has to be, it has to be taken care of. So I hope if whatever gets discovered or not, it gets dealt the right way and of course, justice needs to prevail at the end of the day.
You know, we, like I said, we need to bring back faith to the community. Because we're losing voters, you know, and, and it looks pretty bad.
Every time and time that we see, it's less and less, when it's supposed to be more because our population keeps growing, so I agree.
So, you know, so if, if we can bring back the trust, be truthful about what's going on, half leaders that are going to say, you know what, I'm putting my foot down, this is not going to happen, let's get to, let's get to the bottom of this. All of a sudden, guess what, I guarantee you that the voter turnout's going to go.
That morale's going to be boosted up and more people are going to want to get involved. I agree.
You talked about the traffic flow and also with the last time, how is it now?
We're working on.
Synchronizing anything?
Yes, there's a project being conducted by the city in Tech Start and it's going to be from Malinche and Seymour, I believe, all the way to Palo Blanco on eighty-three south. So that's, that's a big stretch and of course, we're not going to stop there. Once that one's taken care of and fixed, you have the rest of the south, Sierra Vista, Silento Lindo, Prada Machina, all those different areas, Soria Drive, those are all traffic congestion areas and also, you know, creates a big safety issue for our drivers and our people that are, you know, taking that daily commute. Another big area that needs a lot of attention, and I brought it up this past week on the NPO meeting, is the Cuatro Vientos Road or Loop 20 South. Unfortunately, we had another tragic accident happen this past week, you know, that's, that's one too many, you know, and, and I know Tech Start, and initially I wasn't in office yet, it was created a certain way, it was designed a certain way and it didn't work out. So we're adjusting it to the right way and in the future, we're going to have overpasses at each intersection of the south, just their, just like the way they're popping up in Clark Boulevard and, and we're going to pop it up in, in the areas of Shiloh, Jacaman, of course Delmar. The next stretch of overpasses are going to be in that area. We want to make sure, you know, we think ahead of the game, we know that's going to be booming, it's, it's already booming. Houses are popping up, subdivisions are popping up like crazy, you're going to have businesses surrounding, schools surrounding the houses. So that for me is also one of my main concerns and being in the NPO again, I'm able to address those concerns and make sure that our community, our daily communities, it's the safest way as possible, not only that, but you don't want a traffic delay, you don't want a traffic jam out there, you know, in the morning, in the afternoons.
You're right, you're right, because we've had some bad accidents. And little by little, but now I think everybody's working together. I'm, I'm seeing this. You have a lot of people, kind of, they, they just spread out. And I'm starting to see a bunch of public officials grouped together and you know what, we're working towards this benefit for the city. We have some that are still stragglers out there, but I think we think people like you start bringing people, you know, people together and that's, that's what counts.
That's what counts, you know?
And, and once everybody starts looking, everybody can focus to that one direction which we need, needs to happen. But goals need to be achieved. Everybody has great goals, great ideas, but let's start with the most, the, the needs, the safety, you know?
You know, for example, and you're right, it's, and I'm going to give you a perfect example. If somebody calls my office or my cell number, I tend to get my cell number out because of course, I need to be accessible to the people. Or Facebook, whatever it might be. When they call me or give me a concern about a speed bump in South Laredo, in a neighborhood, I'm not going to say, whoa, that's the city's problem, so go ahead and call them. Of course not. That's not, you know, that's, that's not my job, I don't want to do that, I don't want to close doors or not give any hopes to the people and solutions. So I direct them the right way and if I can, I'll call that councilman from that area, give him the address and ask for what we can do together. If we can, if they need assistance with some monies, you know, I'll talk to the county and see what we can do. But that's the way I'm doing it, you know, that's the way I think it should be done everywhere. But, you know, you don't want to, you know, close doors, if we have a, a family asking for funeral escorts because they can't afford to pay the escorts, I'm not going to turn them away, I'm going to reach out to the constable from the south area, I'm going to reach out to the sheriff's office. And that's what we need to do, we need to be, make sure we're accessible 100% to our community, you know, even though it might not be scope of our, of our duties or responsibilities, but we're not going to stop there. You know, we're going to make sure we find a solution for them. May it be, you know, as little as a backpack with school supplies for somebody, you know, it goes a long ways. What's it going to cost you, $10, $20, you know, for that one child, but you're, you're boosting up their education, you know, and again, education has no price. So that's what we're trying to do as a commissioner.
And that's exactly what needs to happen, you know? We need to start helping, you know, there's an old saying in Spanish, vive es para ser vives y no nos vives para vivir. And that's the way it has to be done. And whatever you can do to help out, do it. And, you know, again, we need leaders and thank you again for stepping up.
I appreciate that.
What else you see in the, in the future here? What do you see in Webb County in general? Not, not just in your precinct, but in Webb County? You know, this is a problem that's coming to Webb County, this is something that I foresee that we all have to acknowledge?
Exactly. And, and I'm glad you're bringing that up because a lot of the, the community out there doesn't know that not only my, you know, my responsibilities are for my precinct, but as a governing body in the Commissioners Court, it's to the entire county and there's, there's a lot of major decisions that come out of that, that governing body. Right now, one of the concerns that we have is the lifedown fairgrounds.
Okay, what's going on there?
You know, we've all seen it, you know, we love to go out there when it comes to, you know, the fair, you know, the, the week of the fair, you know, Jalapeno Festival when it was there, Menudo Bowl, any type of event, you know, Laredo's Laredo. They want to go and hang out, they want to go and participate, it's what we do. You know, time and time again, every time we visit Lifedowns, it's been neglected. I think it can be, it can be, you know, renovated and constructed all over again to where it can be nice and that, that's the face of Laredo for a lot of people. A lot of people come from Hebronville, from different small towns around the area and this is what we have to offer for them. Not only that, for our local kids that, that are in the 4-H club and depend on that, they like, they like participating in, in life.
Explain to me, what is Lifedowns? Is Lifedowns a organization by itself, a nonprofit by itself, or is it part of the county or did they rent it out? What's going on with Lifedowns? What is it?
So, so the way it works is life is leased out from the county to a private entity, I think it's a nonprofit, I want to make sure. And so they air their own governing, or not governing, but their own, you know, nonprofit operational, you know, management group that does it. What we want to do is we want to see if we can work together somehow. And, and again, it's all about working together, right? For the betterment of our kids, for our community, anybody that participates and takes advantage of life.
Here's a, here's a question. Is that managing group that does it, that, that nonprofit entity, are they supposed to keep up with the upkeep of it or is it the county that does it?
There's a lot of back and forth and I know there's.
There's stipulated or no?
There's already attorneys involved that, I don't know how much more I can say, so I'm just going to say what I know about, you know? What's, what goes on as far as events and what we want to do is partnering together. But there's already attorneys involved and my opinion obviously is, we want to make sure we provide the best services, you know, the best facilities, you know, to our kids that are coming up with the 4-Hers and FFA, you know, organization for the schools and anybody else that's going to visit, you know, Laredo and participate in, in lifer activities.
Okay, awesome. Let's talk about this issue with the landfill, what's going on with the landfill? What's?
That's also been a back and forth one.
What's all this jargon that's going on?
Exactly, I wasn't able to meet or, or meet up for that, that last town hall meeting that was available at TMIU. Again, a lot of back and forth, legal stuff going around. There was an agenda Commissioners Court and the attorneys in the civil legal division were concerned, along with the planning department from our county, they were concerned about They were concerned about the flipping. As a county, we want to make sure everything's done the right way, regardless of what it is, the project or yay or nay from the people or whatnot, we want to make sure we do everything that's legal and legitimate for the community members uh and our constituents to benefit off. Uh, I know there's a lot of back and forth. Um, I don't know in what step they're in right now. I think they're waiting to see what TCQ comes, you know, decision or not, but again, you know, we want to make sure if something hits our, our city, uh, that it's done the right way and that's not gonna damage our, our, our economy, not only that, but our, our, you know, our land. Uh, we want to make sure everything's done the right way and then we'll see what, what happens with that.
Good answer. Yeah, that's a good, good answer. You know, a lot of folks always want to put input, but if it's black and white and it's a law, nah, we have to follow.
Exactly.
And I think that's what's gonna happen with uh that landfill, yeah.
Oh, we want to make sure we're good, I mean.
Yeah, anything else?
Uh, no, I mean, anything else, I mean, I, I want to urge the community to stay involved and follow my page on Facebook, of course. It's for the benefit of them. We have always free events going around. Uh, community events that, that can benefit either the children uh themselves or the elderly, you know, so.
It's touch base about this uh fundraiser you're doing tonight for the children. Where's it gonna be at?
So we're, we're in conjunction with a nonprofit organization that's, that's uh, that, that's being established and it's called the Giving Tree of South Texas Foundation. This foundation is gearing on uh not only school supplies, uh gifts for Christmas, Easter baskets for Easter, um, you know, hygiene pro, uh products for whoever needs, is in need. But they're also gearing to where they're gonna be giving out scholarships to high schools uh in my area, which I'm, that's, you know, a, a, a big plus for me. So today, we're having a bowling fundraiser. It's gonna be a Jet Bowl uh with the Bella family and, and I want to thank the Bella family because they're always helping out.
Sure, they're always in front with it.
They're always.
I mean, they extend their hand openly.
Exactly, they won't say no to, to helping out the community, so it's always a plus for, for having them involved as well. Um, it's gonna be today from six to nine, it's gonna be a bowling fundraiser and we're bowling for school supplies and scholarships in the future. Uh, I believe the foundation is gonna be able to disperse about six to ten scholarships this time around and all schools ending. Uh, but for next year, it's, it's gonna be growing, it's gonna be a lot better for uh, for uh students that are gonna be coming out of high school.
That's awesome.
That's right.
Awesome. And who's spearheading that organization?
Uh, the nonprofit organization is, is spearheaded by my wife. Uh, she wants to be involved in the community and I think it's a good project for her to be involved in. Uh, and uh, as a commissioner, I want to be involved and, and again, you work together, you pull our resources, we are able to do more.
Sure.
Uh, as a local nonprofit organization, it's very important to be able to uh have a board, so there's a board established already. And the, the board consists of people that are always doing for the community, so when I, when I was, my wife was able to reach out to these board members, they were excited to come together, because again, uh, one person can only do so much. But a group, you know, they'll do a little bit more and that's what's all about.
I commend your wife for stepping up on that.
Thank you.
And uh, best of luck later, later on tonight and whatever you all need.
I appreciate that. I'm glad to say, you know, uh, all the lanes are taken and it's gonna be a lot of fun, so. If y'all want to swing by and have some fun, try to win out some door prizes, we're gonna be out there. I love everybody out there.
Last, any last words for the camp, uh, for the county?
Uh, you know, to, to uh the community out there that's listening and, and following this show, it's a, it's a great show, so Paul, I wanna, I wanna, you know, thank you again for inviting me. I know you're always uh, you know, uh, staying involved with what's going on in Laredo and a lot of people are excited to see, you know, leaders come in and the different organizations come in, because sometimes we don't know what's going on, right? So I follow you sure a lot and I know, you know, I'm always trying to, you know, go, go live and see who's out there and, and, because I want to learn, you know. There's, you learn every day, you learn something every day.
Absolutely.
So I'm always trying to stay involved, so again, you know, thank you so much, it means a lot.
Thank you and thank you for step, stepping up and letting, I will say it again. I've seen many public officials, but I've only seen one planting trees out there and that's you.
There you go.
And that's just the way it is.
Thank you so much.
And until next time, you guys be safe, safe. Peace and prayers to that family of that young girl, peace to our law enforcement, to our border patrol and let's be steadfast with everybody out there. And no texting and driving. Until next time.